So it is 7:33 on Tuesday, October 6th. So I will call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the chair of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. So members, when I call your name, if you could please respond in the affirmative. Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Yeah.
Kevin Mills.
Yeah.
Stephen Revellak.
Here.
And myself. Staff, when I call your name, if you could please respond in the affirmative. Rick Valorelli.
Here.
And excuse me, Kelly Lanima.
Here.
Perfect, thank you. In addition, our anticipated speakers on the agenda. So there are persons here representing 7274 Grafton Street.
Yes, Barbara Nessie.
Perfect, thank you. Is there someone here to represent 150 Summer Street?
Here, Alton Wong.
Thank you. And is there someone here representing 21 Oakledge?
Yep, Tony and Lila Byers.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. The order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public hearings posted on the posted agenda. For this meeting, the Arlington zoning board of appeals is convening a video conference via the Zoom app with telephone access as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Other participants are participating by phone. Other people may only be listening and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask that you please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As chair, reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. So with that in mind, I am actually going to go ahead and take up, excuse me, item number five first, which is an update on the residential design guidelines development. So I will pass it over to you.
Great, I'm just opening up my screen here. Can everyone see? Can everyone see my screen?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay. There we go, Zoom changed some of the protocols here, so.
Perfect.
All right. And let me just see if I can zoom in. Great. No, that's not it. So first of all, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kelly Lanima and I'm the senior planner for the Department of Planning and Community Development here in Arlington. I'm here tonight to present a project overview of the Arlington Residential Design Guidelines. I'm going to explain a little bit about where we are and how we got to where we are in this project. I know Pat Hanlon, he is working with us on the design review working group and he's given you a little bit of an update. But we're at a point where we're nearing the end of the project or about to begin an open comment period. So I wanted to give you an update before Harriman comes in later this month. We'll also discuss some of the next steps and how we'd like to work with you in finalizing the final design guidelines. And then I'll have a few minutes for questions and answers and I'm happy to answer anything. And if I don't know the answer, I will follow up with you on the next day. So with this project, we are working with the community to create residential design guidelines for residential projects in R0, R1, and R2 districts across town. We're trying to address three specific goals in this project. So we want to balance, we're addressing the needs of neighborhood residents, people who live within a specific neighborhood that has a certain character or identity. And then the desires and the ability of property owners to do what they want within the limits of the zoning bylaw to their own property. And we're also trying to address the general public interest of the Arlington community. We are also trying to balance different needs in a clear and understandable way. So we don't want to create an additional financial burden by setting high requirements for design. We're trying to make design a little bit more accessible to everyone in Arlington. We also want the design lines, design guidelines to be flexible enough to encourage creativity without creating sort of cookie cutter requirements for every home in a certain neighborhood. We don't want to create a pastiche of what Arlington used to be at any certain period in time. And then finally, moving forward, we're looking to recommend an approval process that ensures that balance is incorporated. So we're working with Harriman, our design, our consultant here, to identify an appropriate review process so we can incorporate the design guidelines into some sort of review that already exists in town. We began this project back in December of 2019. Through the winter, Harriman worked to analyze different neighborhoods in town, looking at housing typologies and year builds, different design characteristics. We presented an overview of that existing conditions as part of our online visual preference survey. We had about 1,200 people respond to that survey during our first step in our public engagement period in the spring. And then we took that feedback and we use that, we use those 1,200 responses to craft the virtual workshop, which was held in June of 2020. And I'll get to what we presented in that workshop in just a minute. Harriman took the feedback both from the working group and the visual preference survey and the, the meeting in June to craft the draft residential design guidelines. Those were presented to the working group last week. They are currently reviewing them. They have a deadline of October 12th to give us their feedback. So once we receive the feedback from the working group, we'll be turning that around and presenting, giving you a revised copy for your own review. But we just wanted to have the design view working group have a chance to take a look at that first. And then really, right now, we're in that public review period, looking forward to December of having a final community meeting and then wrapping up the project by the end of the year. So just to give just a few visual examples of the different steps of the project. In the existing conditions, Harriman did a lot of data analysis on housing typologies, the architectural flavor of Arlington's neighborhoods. They divine, they did sort of define some fuzzy boundaries for neighborhoods. We don't have specific boundaries like Cambridge does for neighborhoods, but we tried to identify like where are some consistent characteristics. They also looked at some of the key design issues and our current permitting process. In the visual preference survey, we surveyed a wide number of issues in town. But the three design issues that kept popping up to the top as things that people were most concerned about were, as you can see here. So and these, I should point out, these, these visuals here are not from anywhere in Arlington. They're from Metford, Lexington, et cetera. But the first is that additions, some people don't feel like additions that are made in town necessarily always fit with the existing design context of the house or the neighborhood. People are expressed some concern about new construction that's not in scale with the neighborhood. It may comply with the zoning bylaw, but they feel like it doesn't necessarily fit within the existing characteristics of a street. And then some concern about parking that dominates the principal facade. So this is a big change in home design for single and particularly two family homes between now and when Arlington's most active periods of development were in the early 20th century. Just the demand for more parking and larger garages has sort of changed the way that our homes interact with the streets. We took that feedback and in the presentation to the community at the end of June, we tried to understand a little bit more about how prescriptive and how, how detailed people wanted the design guidelines to be. So we presented a range of options to the community. Everything from what you see on the left with option one, which is more general urban design principles that are up to a lot more interpretation. And then getting over to option three, really being very specific with what the zoning bylaw requires and showing precise dimensional requirements. And I just want to know overwhelmingly, people chose somewhere between one and two. They like the idea of seeing visual examples of understanding a little bit more about the vocabulary, but they weren't looking for something that is super prescriptive. So Harriman took that feedback and they created the draft design guidelines. Just sort of understanding what everybody had set up until that point, they created a number of principles that start at sort of an urban design level on the streetscape. So looking at how homes fit within the context of a street. And then in the principles for the B level principles, looking at building design principles. So these are more about massing, about where a home is sighted on a street and where additions might be created. And then with the building elements principles, the C level principles, really getting to, into more details like dormers, windows, roofs and that sort of thing. But I do want to point out that nowhere are we recommending anything like required paint colors or architectural style. We don't want to say that homes should be X kind of cape or whatever. It's, we want to encourage creativity. We're just trying to help people understand the overall context of the community and how their home or their addition might work within that context. Just to dive in a little bit more of an example of what you'll see when you are able to review the guidelines. Harriman's taken our overall principles. So an example, like a principle that says that new houses and significant additions should be oriented and located in a way that is consistent with their neighborhood block category. Those block categories are defined in the overall mapping in the existing conditions. But then taking both illustration and photographs to show what's encouraged and what's discouraged. And again, like I said, these are guidelines, not requirements. So we're trying to frame them within this idea of what the community has expressed preference for and then what is discouraged. And then throughout the guidelines, we're identifying our terms and trying to be very precise to really share, like, try to encourage people to have that shared vernacular, understanding architectural terms a little bit more. So the next steps in the process, like I said, the design review working group is reviewing the draft guidelines right now. And so sometime in the middle of next week, we expect to be able to share with the zoning by, zoning board of appeals, a draft, a revised draft of the guidelines so you can review it. Harriman is working at the same time to identify some recommendations for a review process. So they're going to come back to us with some ideas about how this could be incorporated into an existing review process, whether that is with this board or with inspectional services department and how that could actually look. And then we can all have a discussion about that. Finally, we're in the comment period right now. We had to present to the ARB last night, actually, because of special town meeting and how they're pretty much booked up through November. So we did have to present to them. But Harriman is on board to present the draft guidelines and a process to you at the end of this month. And then we'll be collecting comments through early November so that we can share that with the community in December. And like I said, wrap up the guidelines by December, the end of December. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have and thank you again for inviting me to present.
Thank you so much for coming. So the, the public comment period for the general public, will that be taking place online?
We'll be doing the workshop, we'll do one final workshop at the beginning of December. That will be virtual. And then what we're looking to do is what we did with the first workshop in June is to record the workshop and then keep that open for an additional two weeks after the workshop. So people who aren't able to participate on that given night can still kind of do it. It's like a do it yourself workshop and then they'll be able to review the draft guidelines at that time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions, if I may.
Please.
So Kelly, these can, or Ms. Lanima, these can go to you or to Mr. Hanlon. Well, first, I like the idea of visual guidelines, you know, do A rather than B. I believe Watertown has a similar set of, or a set of residential design guidelines that are in that format. And, you know, they're, I think they're helpful and people can look at them and, and get them. And, you know, I also think that will help us deal with like the number of non-conforming lots, et cetera, and different, different topographies and so forth. So when you, in the ARBs packet for last night, I noticed a report. And one of the, on page, I think it was 14, there was a graph showing how the median floor area ratio and median area per dwelling unit had changed over time. And there's a rather noticeable upward trend since the 1980s. And I was just wondering if the working group had looked into the reasons behind that and whether or not this is a pattern that's relatively unique to Arlington or more common around, you know, other areas.
I can say we haven't done an extensive study on that, but I do know just from other planning resources that this is a trend around the nation. So I believe home sizes have increased dramatically from like a median of around 1,500 square feet to now new construction is ranging between three and four in a lot of communities across the nation. So it's sort of a, it's just an interesting, people seem to want more space at the same time that family sizes are actually going down. So and it may be, you know, we could hypothesize about the many reasons why that might happen. But I knew more people are working at home, more people are looking to do things at home, like have a gym, et cetera, et cetera. So there is just a general preference for more space.
Okay, two more quick questions. Quickly, um, so the, the intent of this presentation is just to sort of bring us up to speed on the process and not really to drill down on the results. Okay. So, so if we could keep the comment, keep the questions to that format, I'd appreciate it.
So I was actually more, so yes, I do have two, two more questions and they are process oriented. So one of the, one of the, you know, so when you're doing a project like this, one of the things that you're making, what you're, you're balancing trade offs. Like for example, the way a lot of Arlington's neighborhoods got built is a large lot got divided into small lots. A builder constructed a number of houses using a standard plan. They started off cookie cutter and evolved over time. And, you know, so one of, I'll just ask both my questions and, you know, get to get them out of the way. But one is, what was about, what were the working groups thoughts on balancing the continued evolution of neighborhoods versus maintaining the way that they already are? The other question has a little bit to do with the needs of a family versus, you know, the, what, you know, the family's neighbors might peel, think of as aesthetically desirable. So recently, we had a case where, you know, the petitioner basically said, we have three kids stacked like cordwood in a bedroom and we need more space. So they were doing an addition. Now, if, how does, what's the, were there, was there a discussion given to how one should weigh the needs of a family versus sort of like maintaining coherence with like a block aesthetic?
The goal of these guidelines is to really address, there's multiple audiences here. So we have the homeowner who wants to do an addition because of a growing family. We have a builder who has a limited time between when they purchase a property and when they need to get that to market in order to break even or make a profit on that. And so we also have potentially a town official or a town staff person who's using the guidelines to review a design proposal. And so we really wanted the design guidelines to sort of express what the community prefers. And again, they're not requirements or guidelines, but we have kept them. And I think when you see the actual draft, you'll note that they're, they're very simple. They're very direct and they're very graphic. And so it's trying to sort of encourage flexibility within what the zoning bylaw allows and give some visual examples of how people may accomplish certain things that they may not have thought about. And so they can bring that to their architect or their builder and say, hey, I hadn't really thought about this, but this is what we're looking for.
That sounds great. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay. So just to clarify, so the Harriman is, and the planning department are planning to put together a more detailed presentation for October 27th?
Yes, and then we would provide the revised draft of the guidelines to the board in advance of that. So you had time to review before that meeting.
Okay. So with that in mind, if there are any urgent questions from the public, I'll, we'll take one or two, but otherwise I would ask you to wait until we actually have the whole document at the end of October, because I think that will be, be more informative of any questions that people may have. Not seeing any questions then. Ms. Lanima, thank you so very much for presenting this information for us and we look forward to further developments on this.
I will be in touch. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. You as well. So I will go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. So item six and seven are essentially the same, the same article. So I'm just going to quickly pull up a document here. So can you see my?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So there was a, a meeting held back on September 11th with myself and various members from the community and from the, the applicant for Thorndike Place. And the intent was that based on the reception and the feedback they had received at the prior zoning board of appeals hearing, they were requesting, they, they had an intent to basically do a drastic redesign on the site plan to take it, to take into account a lot of the public comment and the comment from, from Beta Group, from our consultants. And so with that in mind, we discussed the schedule for deliverables from them. And so they, between September 22nd, September 29th, they were going to deliver or revise site plans. And those were delivered, those were, are available. Excuse me, they were made available specifically ahead of the October 1st meeting of the Conservation Commission. And so those plans are currently on the agenda page for the Conservation Commission and they will shortly be up on the zoning board of appeals website as well. And I will show those briefly in a minute. And then on October 13th, which is a week from tonight, we will have, we will reopen the Thorndike Place hearing. And there will be a more thorough presentation of what those plans are and what the intent is with that plan. And what they would like to be able to do is then use feedback from that meeting to prepare more detailed drawings, because that has been one of the things we've been having issues with is that we have a lot of, sort of, we have a lot of drawings, but there's not a lot of very, very deep specificity. They'll be working on that, which they would like to deliver at the start of November to the board so that that can be reviewed. And then we would, on November 27th, we would have another hearing on Thorndike Place where we would very specifically review those detailed engineering plans. So that is the revision on basically the site plan and the, looking at the wetlands and the conservation concerns regarding that property. We are still trying to schedule a hearing on November 10th to discuss issues in regards to the traffic study. But one of the issues that you can imagine we're having is that at the moment, traffic is way off from what, what it usually would be. And so they're having some, they're having some discussions between the applicant and between the reviewing engineers in regards to what, and to how to make that kind of evaluation and how to review those documents. And so we will, we will need to keep the, the board and the public apprised of that. But currently that is penciled in for November 10th. But I do not know if that date will hold or not, but that's still a month out. So hopefully that will come together. So that's, excuse me, the revision and the idea originally, so are you now seeing the site plan?
Yes.
Perfect. So this was the site plan that was delivered to the board back in March of this year, which is very similar to the plan that was originally submitted back in 2016, which has the, the five, the six townhouses out here on Dorothy Road and then the large development on the back. The revised plan that was submitted last week is a very drastic reduction on that. So they are proposing only to do an apartment building, but it would be pushed up onto Dorothy Road. But just going back, so you can see how this really goes almost all the way to Birch, to the back of the houses on Birch Street. And this new proposal is significantly smaller. So all we've seen so far is this plan. And only the discussion at the October 1st meeting of conservation really dealt with these wetland setbacks and the, the location of the floodplain and had no discussion whatsoever on the height of the building or the, anything regarding the interior. And had no discussion at all about the, really about sort of the traffic and how that would impact. So we do not, at this point, have any information on any of those. That will all be presented to us at next week's meeting. At, also at last week's, that, excuse me, at the hearing, at the end of August, we had voted to request that the applicant provide us with, turn this stop share. We asked the applicant provide us with either the documents that were required under the application or a schedule for when those would be delivered or a, an updated set of waivers responding to that. That document was dated September 11th, excuse me, September 25th. And that document, we do have that now. I, I know it was in the application, it was in the materials for the agenda on Novus for this meeting. So it can be reviewed there and that will make its way up onto the town's website as well. Also, and speaking with Mr. Valorelli, the board is in receipt of a, a large amount of correspondence in regards to this, to the Thorndike Place application. Those documents will be distributed to the board tomorrow, starting tomorrow. So we have time to review them. We held off on distributing them just so that they wouldn't get confused with the material specific to this hearing. And so that is sort of an update of where we all are on, on Thorndike Place at the moment. Are there any questions from the board in regards to the schedule and the documents received? Nope, seeing none. Are there any specific questions from the public in regards to the, the revised schedule and the documentation that we've received? Again, seeing none. We'll move on from that piece. So then I will go back to the top of the agenda real quick. So item number two is the members voting, the approval of the minutes of September 8th. So the meeting for September 8th, that was distributed to the board. And in addition to that, there was also recommended a, a revision to the minutes from August 25th. That was the Thorndike Place hearing. The minutes did not completely record the, the full text of the vote that we took. And so we will be amending, proposing to amend the minutes to include the complete text of that, excuse me, of that vote. So we have that accurately in the record. And so all members of the board were. And so all members of the board were provided copies of both sets of minutes. And so may I have a a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A move from Pat. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Minutes are approved. Item number three is approval of decisions. So we have decisions from, we have decisions from August 20, from September 8 and August 25. So the cases in question is 16 Maynard Street, 4648 Park Avenue Extension, 49 Magnolia Street, 469 Appleton Street and 3436 Newport Street. So those draft decisions have been reviewed and commented upon by the board. So may I have a a motion from the board to approve the decisions?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. A second.
Second.
Mills. All those board member, so the I will go on just quickly on the votes. So the four votes that were specific to September 8. Mr. Ford, who is one of the, excuse me, one of the people on the, who made the decision is not available this evening. So I'll just quickly roll call the other members. Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Reddellak.
Aye.
The chair says aye as well. And then the case from August 11, which is 4648 Park Avenue Extension, Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. So those are all approved. Four to zero. I'm going to hold off on, so item four is essentially the same as eight, nine, and 10. So I'm going to go ahead and hold off on those and move forward to the the hearings scheduled for this evening. So the first of those is docket number 35947274 Grafton Street. So this was a previously issued decision by the board, and there is a request, excuse me, to amend that decision. So Mr. Anesey.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. The, there is a request to amend that special permit. I just want to point out to the members of the board that the folks who basically have developed this two family house and went ahead with the hearing on June 25 of 2019 for the purpose of requesting that a dormer be approved on the building. They're not developers per se. This is a family type operation. They went ahead, they had a hearing in June of 2019. At that time, the zoning board did approve the petition for special permit. There was a question of open space and there was a question of again, approval of the dormer. There were conditions in that special permit decision. A number, a couple of the decisions related to the windows being glazed, which I'm given to understand is being done. Another one was that the roof pitch would be 212. The item that seemed to get by most everybody was the fact that there would be no headroom to the dormer with respect to access to the dormer based upon the plans approved by the board. What happened was the the plans were approved by the board, the appeal period expired. I obtained a copy of a certified copy of these the decision recorded that at the Registry of Deeds. In January of 2020, the a member of the petitioner family applied for building permit from the town. They obtained a building permit based upon the plans as approved by the zoning board and based upon the decision of the zoning board. They then proceeded to construct the dormer. What happened was, however, the roof pitch did not get the 212 pitch. Now, one of the issues that occurred around that time that I think the board should should know is that the the main individual who was working on the project, who would be the husband of Miriam, who was here this evening, by the way, I believe that Miriam is here as well with the architect. He came down with COVID. And when he came down with COVID, and that was in March, by the way, when he came down with COVID, he wound up at Mass General Hospital for somewhere between eight and 10 days. And it was iffy during that time as to what his progress was going to be. Well, what happened was the roof got constructed and the roof again didn't have the 212 pitch. Once that was discovered and it was brought to the attention of the building inspection department by a citizen, Mr. Champa went out and did an inspection. When he did the inspection, he confirmed the fact that there was no 212 pitch. But he also noted that there was a small dormer that was constructed on the roof with respect to providing the headroom for access to the dormer. Now, that was not something that the zoning board had approved. It was not on the plans approved by the board back in June of 2019. So when he saw that, he basically put a stop order on the job and said to the owners, you need to go ahead. You need to do, deal with both issues. You need to deal with the 212 pitch on the roof. And you also need to deal with the headroom issue for access to the dormer. I got involved again at that point, and I prepared the petition to amend the special permit and brought and filed that based upon the fact that we need a special permit from the board with respect to that headroom issue. Now, at the same time, I contacted the architect. Eric, are you on board? Eric? I guess he's not.
Sorry.
You are there. Good. Contacted Eric and Eric was kind enough to go out to the site. And he did his inspection as well, confirming everything that my champion had come up with in terms of a lack of a 212 pitch and confirming the dormant as well. So what we did at that point is we redesigned the roof. And we have submitted plans to the members of the board with respect to a redesign of the roof. And the redesign of the roof does in fact show a 212 pitch. Those plans were stamped by context, that's the design firm, and by a structural engineer, a Mr. Guarino. So you have those plans before you this evening. Those plans were then they were, they were given to the inspection department. But Mr. Champa in turn wrote an email to the members of the board. And and that email basically said, confirm what I'm telling you right now in terms of the history. But also said that he went out there, confirmed the fact that there was a not enough headroom. And confirmed the fact that because there was not enough headroom, the plans approved by both the board, the members of the board, and the building inspection department did not meet and comply with the International Residential Building Code. So therefore, we would need relief for that. And that's again, a reason why I file the application for for the special permit. He did indicate that he would need to see plans confirming and showing the 212 pitch. We have given those plans to him. He also confirmed that the construction of the roof, the additional work on the roof will not put the building in violation of the height requirement contained in the zoning by law. And according to his memo, the additional dormer does not put the addition in excess of a half story. So the reason we're here this evening is to hopefully come up with a a solution so that the clients, again, a family operated type situation will have access to the dormer through that small dormer that was constructed on the roof. We intend to comply with the 212 pitch. And Mr. Champion knows that. He's got the plans on that as well. From our point of view, in terms of the special permit criteria, we feel is there. The the addition of that small dormer on the roof is not anything that's going to be intrusive to the neighborhood. In fact, it's going to continue the harmonious nature of what the board had approved at the June 25 hearing in 2019, when they concluded, when they issued the special permit, that the construction would not be detrimental to the neighborhood and would in fact be in harmony with other buildings and other dwellings in the neighborhood. So we're asking the members of the board this evening to grant the special permit for the access to the dormer with respect to that small dormer area that has been constructed. We intend to comply with the roof pitch. And and the building inspection department will make us do that. The what you folks did in the zoning decision is you entered a few conditions subsequent to that decision. One of those was the 212 roof pitch, which you mentioned twice. So that's pretty clear that that was your intent. And the other was that we think about, not think about, but we do glaze windows, which we intend to do. So that's pretty much where we are. And I'm asking that the board grant the special permit at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Anesey. I'm going to go ahead and share on the screen some of these plans. So this is the the first plan that was submitted. Oh, this, this does have the, this is the final one. So
That's a final plan, Chris.
So this was the original building before any construction took place. And then this is so this is dormer was approved as a part of the original application back in June. And this here, which is shown more clearly here. So this is the proposed revision to the roof. So they're going to be raising the ridge. It'll still be below the maximum height for a building in this district. So that will get them the pitch on the roof. And then this dormer here is the the dormer in question that was added over the stairwell. So that's correct, Mr. Anesey?
That's correct.
Okay. So one question I did have, so on the original building, so this is the driveway side of the building. There is an original dormer on the front of the building. But that is not shown on the revised plan. Is that an error or has that front dormer been removed?
Yes. Decision was to leave it and it is, it still exists.
So that, so that this planet, so there is a dormer that is remaining that's just not shown here.
In the front, yes.
But there's no modifications to the existing dormer.
Right, correct.
Okay. Are there questions from the, Mr. Mills?
Yes, square footage with the raised have we done a recalculation of the square footage?
Yes.
Give me one second. Reconfirm here. I hate to misspeak. 787 on the top floor. 757, sorry.
Do you have the square footage of the floor below?
Looks like 1518.
Will it be? There'll be 754.
Read it, read it.
Pretty close.
Pretty close. Okay.
1514, I believe.
Correct, yeah. So it is below 50%. Okay. And per the the request of Mr. Champa, you guys will provide a final as-built plan documenting that.
Yes, correct.
Perfect. Other questions, Mr. Mills?
Well, again, is, you know, does that include the existing dormer? I mean, you know, it started on these drawings.
It does include the existing front dormer, yes. That's what I was just looking at.
I trust Mr. Champ will check up on this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will stop sharing this.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hanlon.
At the risk of being ungenerous, one of the conditions of the special permit was there shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. As far as I know, the only reason that we are seeing this is that a citizen raised an issue with respect to the slope of the dormer. And when Mr. Champa went out and looked, all of this, all of this came out. And I, this does happen from time to time. And it's not entirely acceptable to build first and then seek an approval, ratifying it later on. And I'd like to have a better understanding of why it is that nobody caught the fact that that a dormer was being built that was not on the plans, that was not approved. And that it would be hard for anyone to imagine that it had been been approved. It just seems to me to cry out for at least some explanation as to why that happened and how it happened.
Now, Mr. Hanlon, are you talking about the access issue or the pitch issue?
The small issue, the the pitch with the pitches was sort of in in the works, I understand from before. I'm really concerned about the small dormer that was put in. It was needed perhaps, but it wasn't supposed to happen without according to, without getting the official, the written approval of the board, and there was no attempt to do that.
It was missed by everybody, Mr. Hanlon. It was missed by the by the petitioner. It was missed by by myself as counsel for the petitioner. It was missed by the zoning Board of Appeals. At the time, the plans were submitted for the hearing before the board in June of 2019. It was missed by the building, the inspection department in January of 2019, when the permit was issued by the building inspection department, who had looked at the plans. And it was only discovered later on, and quite frankly, it was discovered by a citizen who had driven by and saw it. And at that point, brought it to the attention of the Inspection Services Department. And that's when corrective action began to be taken. Now, I mentioned that one of the Now, I mentioned that one of the, it's a family business and one of the complicating factors here, it came later, but one of the complicating factors was that at least in March of 2020, one of the principals who was involved in all of this construction came down with COVID. Now, he would have been suffering that even before March of 2020. So I can offer that as a reason why it could miss by the applicant and get missed by the applicant's team, including the architect as well.
Nessie, I can understand how that might apply to the, to the pitch, but you know, it's not as if a little dormer suddenly appeared in the middle of the thing and nobody noticed it. Somebody had to say, oh, we need to put something on here that we hadn't thought of before because we need to meet the building code. Now, the builder had to do that, the architect had to do that, somebody had to do that. And that somebody didn't say, oh, we're deviating from the plans, we better get permission to do this, that somebody just went ahead and did it and came real close actually to violating the two and a half. And I don't really, I don't really understand how it was missed. This is a building and something was put into that structure that wasn't in the plans. Somebody had to decide to do that and whoever did must have known that it wasn't in the plan.
And again, that's the reason why we're back before the board, Mr. Hanlon, requesting a special permit. Mistakes are made, okay, and they're made all the time. And when mistakes are made, one goes back before a board for the purpose of seeing whether relief can be granted to fix the error that was made. And that's why we're here. I don't think that there was any devious intent on the part of the applicant to do this, Mr. Hanlon. And I'll tell you one thing, as an attorney, I have made up my mind that when plans get approved by the zoning board, by the inspection department, even though I've never done this before, I'm going to start going out to job sites, not frequently, but out to job sites to just be sure that something like this doesn't happen again. If I'd seen this, I would have known, but it's not my job to go out there and check on construction as an attorney. But nevertheless, I think I'm going to start doing that from now on because this has been an example of how things can go awry.
Anything further, Mr. Hanlon?
Nope.
Thank you. Mr. Dupine, any questions?
Just as a matter of clarification, are you looking, Mr. Nessie, for a new special permit? How would this?
No, amending the special permit.
If approved, it would be cast.
Correct. Because the special, the permit was already approved for the, but Mr. Hanlon's right, okay, that there is a provision in the decision that says, you know, it's supposed to deviate, okay? And that's why I've explained to you, I've learned a lesson from this certainly as an attorney, okay? And I'm going to conduct myself differently in the future, and I'm sure that the architect is going to as well. But that's why we're here.
Thank you. Mr. Revak, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Are there any, at this point, I'm going to open up the hearing for public comment. If there are members of the public who have comments specific to this project, if they could please raise their hand through the Zoom application. I see a hand. Mr. Loretty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Loretty, 56 Adams Street. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if I could just cast some light on a few things on this. And, you know, I may well have been the citizen who raised the issue of the roof pitch. I really don't know. But in terms of the timing on that, you know, this, this actually went back to last, over a year ago. And I had some correspondence with, initially with town council Doug Heim, because that roof pitch requirement is something that was relatively new in the bylaw. And then I found that it was indeed in the special permit itself. I hadn't participated in the original hearing at all. And he informed me at that time that inspectional services was aware of issues with construction. And at that time, the only construction was rough framing on that third floor. There was no roof. You know, there were exposed roof rafters. And I, you know, I just find it really unfortunate that these problems weren't addressed at that time. You know, he wrote, he said it was his understanding that everyone has violations under those plans for which structural remedies to height will be required. So I think, you know, this really could have been remedied some time ago. But I guess my request to your board, Mr. Chairman, is that you really take a close look at this issue of whether the half-story definition is met. And I say that as a resident of a two-family house, 1,500 square feet on one story of these houses, and they're all pretty much the same here in East Arlington, is really big. I would say more typically there, excuse me, 1,100, excuse me, it's 1,100 to 1,200 square feet for the footprint. So unless there were some significant additions to that house's footprint, that just seems very, very, very large to me for, you know, the footprint or floor area of the second floor of that home. I know there was a plan submitted with the documents posted, and maybe it's supposed to show that compliance, but frankly, it's so illegible, I can't really read it. I don't know if your board got a better copy or not, but I would simply ask that.
It appears to be a structural plan with framing.
With that?
Does not appear to be anything beyond that.
Ah, okay, so it didn't, it didn't give you any indication anyway. So anyway, I just would ask, you know, in general, if applicants are submitting plans to you, that they be of, you know, enough, high enough quality so that when you zoom in, you can actually read the numbers on them. But anyway, my, as I said, my request to the board is that, you know, you do really ensure to your own satisfaction that that half-story definition is met with documents that you have in your possession. And this whole thing with this stairway, I find kind of perplexing. As I said, as someone who's lived in a two-family house, every one of these houses that has the stairway in the corner going up to the third floor has terrible roof height, I mean ceiling height. And I'm not, I'm not aware of the building code, but I, it's just hard for me to understand how this ever got to your board for a special permit, because my understanding is the plans are supposed to be reviewed by the inspectional services department even before they come to you for the, for the special permit. And I hope, you know, that's something you can address with the inspectional services department going forward. And I just want to end with a, with a question, Mr. Chairman. On your board processes, when the plans are approved for a special permit, is there something called a permit set that's actually signed off on, I mean literally signed off or initialed by the board members or whoever's acting as the chair? So that the people in inspectional services know exactly what set of plans was approved with the special permit?
Thank you, Mr. Loretty. To answer that question, no, we have traditionally not done so, but that is something I'll absolutely take under advisement.
Yeah, I would. I know when I served on the redevelopment board, I know we did it in some cases. I don't know that we did it religiously, but I think it is done in a lot of towns. And I suggest that that would, you know, that would take care of some of the problems. But I'll leave it up to your board, you know, to determine the appropriateness of this change. But assuming it, you know, it does comply with the half-story definition, the slope and everything else, I don't have any particular objections myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loretty. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak in regards to this matter? Going once, going twice? All right, so I'll be closing public comment on this hearing. So the, in relation to the comments previously raised, there was one other question I had and I was going to quickly revert back to the plan. So this is the original plan of the houses constructed, I mean, the original, before any construction began. On the street, there's this two-story enclosed porch. And then is, was it, is it removed? Is it still there? Is it incorporated into the house? I was wondering if the architect could address that.
Yeah, it is incorporated into the house. We treat it as more of, just an extension of the rest of the materials rather than as a separate piece of the project. In fact, on the second floor, they opened up the structural wall and put in a beam so that it could be part of the living room.
Okay. So this, so basically this roof structure here, this, this front hip was brought all the way forward. So this was incorporated into the house?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know that some, some houses have larger floor areas because of enclosed porches. And I was, it looked like maybe it had been taken off, but you have actually enlarged it and incorporated into the house.
Yes.
Go ahead and unshare this. Other questions and comments from the, final questions and comments from the board?
None.
So in regards to Mr. Hanlon's question, so we did have a hearing before us several years ago, is a large addition on Highland Avenue. And the applicant, on the front of the addition, at the basement level, they put in a large garage. And during construction, they felt it would be better to put a small shed roof out, a couple of feet out over the front of the garage so that when you got out to open the garage door, you wouldn't have to stand in the rain. And so that was just added and done. And it was something that, again, somebody walked by, noticed it, said, hey, that wasn't on the plans. And so they came back afterwards to the board and the board reviewed it and that, that was approved. So unfortunately, in some of these cases, the additions, the changes to the approved plans are sometimes things that happen on the fly and while it should, that should not be the way that they're discovered, they have been discovered in that way in the past. And this board has not treated that prejudicially, prejudicially in the past. Okay. So, so I think the, in terms of a finding from the board, I think we identified that there were two primary issues. One being the pitch of the roof on the rear dormer. And the second being the addition of a shed dormer over the stair. Brief question to the, to the architect, is the building at such a point now that the building department could do a review of the square footage?
I believe so, yes.
So my, the thought was that we could approve the revised plan, which would be the package from context. Let's see if I can zoom in here on the date, the plan that was submitted. Would it be, I think it's August 21st. Does that sound correct?
Eric, I'm getting the actual Loreno approval. Is that the plan stamped by the structural engineer you're referring to?
Oh, um, no, I was referring, there's a plan that's from context.
Yeah, okay.
That shows the revised roof pitch and shows the side dormer.
Yeah, that, the date on that plan.
It's issue number two.
Yeah.
It looks like it's 08212020, I just can't read it.
Chairman, I think it's, it looks like a six.
That's a problem, yeah.
I'm not sure.
I concur with Mr. Hanlon.
Yeah.
And the architect shed some light on that?
Sorry, I am, yeah, it was 08212020.
Okay, so it was 082120, okay. So I think we could find that the, the plan dated August 21st, 2020, showing the revision to the, to the rear, rear shed dormers to meet the requirements of the 212 pitch, that this drawing would show that that would be corrected. And this plan also shows the position of the shed dormer over the stair, which is newly constructed and wanting to be built. And that we note that the drawing is omitting a front dormer, which is existing to remain. Though in regards to the special permit criteria, the requested, there's no change in the, as to why the requested use is essential or desirable, will not create any undue traffic congestion, doesn't make any changes to public water drainage or sewer systems. This, do we really, question five, describing how special regulations for the use is set forth. So basically, that, that has to do with the pitch of the roof that that was originally not followed and that will be amended. And the dormer is there to comply with the, with the state building code, like the addition. It doesn't impair the integrity or the character of the district and will not by its addition cause any excess of any particular use. So I would ask that the, in our vote, we decide, we, excuse me, find that we agree with those findings in this case. And we would ask that the, the conditions is set forth by Mr. Champa be included. So we would need to receive a final as-built set of plans showing final conditions and expressly indicating floor area on second and third levels to verify compliance And also ask that the inspectional services verify the 212 pitch upon construction. Yes, sir.
I would also ask maximum height be included.
Okay. And also to verify maximum height Are there any other, those, to be those three? those, to be those three, but we would mean, all the existing conditions would remain. So we would still maintain jurisdiction and any further changes would still need to come before this board. Yes, Mr. Hanlon.
The, I think it is true that we, what we want to do is to preserve all of the existing conditions, except insofar as they are to be specifically modified by this petition for an amendment. We now, however, have a whole lot of different conditions stated different ways about the pitch of the roof. And I sort of, I, I think that what you've just stated is our current intent. And, uh, I like some flexibility to try to simplify that so that we don't say the same thing over and over and get the essential meaning that we, excuse me, uh, that you just described, just in passing passes.
So then would you be looking to strike specific lines from the existing decision or?
Right, for example, there's one of the lines is pitch will meet or exceed 212.
Okay.
There's also two paragraphs earlier than that, or three, there's, there's another one about the 212 pitch.
Yeah.
You've proposed still another one, in fact, in some ways too, because of different filing requirements. And I just want to make it simple so that we ask for it once in the way that we want it to be done. And then that's all that's in there so that we've sort of cleaned up the, cleaned up the language.
Okay. So this, on the screen now, so this is the original set of conditions. So the first condition was the sealed attic plan, joint meeting that requirements of the half-story. So we are, do we want to keep that or do, or do we want to replace it? Because we had sort of indicated in, in the conditions that I had laid out earlier, we had looked to replace that. So I think I would recommend that we would be replace, replacing condition one, two, three will maintain, four will maintain, we will replace five, six will remain.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, could we go back and look at five?
Yes.
Provide a sign, uh, so the sentence ending, the minimum slope of roofs above attic area considered for a half-story does not exceed a two and a half, or two to 12 pitch. I read does not exceed is meaning flatter. And this, and the second to last paragraph on page five, uh, essentially imposes the opposite criteria, which is saying pitch will meet or exceed 212.
Yeah, so we would be looking to basically remove those two and replace them with a statement that the inspectional services is to verify that the, the reframed pitch of the rear dormer shall be no flatter than 212. Does that address your concern?
Uh, that, that would be fine, yes.
Okay. And number seven is this one here, the petitioner submit as-built planned in special services department. So we are essentially reiterating that one. We will leave number eight in place. Number nine in place. And the other two just are, are more boilerplate, so.
Yep.
So we are basically looking to replace this one here. Paragraph one, paragraph two, paragraph five, and paragraph seven, and replace them with a final set of plans showing the conditions. Final conditions expressly indicating the floor area on the second and third levels to verify compliance with the half-story requirements, um, that inspectional services so verify the 212, that the pitch of the reframed rear dormer shall be no flatter than 212. And we will verify that, that special services to verify the maximum height is within the required height, um, of the district. I believe that, is there, are there any other new conditions or adjustments to the existing conditions recommended by the board?
No.
Nope.
Well.
Nope. All right, seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move we do all that. I second.
Second by Mr. Dupont. Okay.
Chairman, I have one, I mean, when we get to discussion of the motion, I can, one thing I'd like to say.
So that, so we're, we're at the point of voting. So do you want to?
Well, I just want to say quickly, I, I'm not going to oppose this just because of self-help. But it's always very tempting just to, to, when you see a problem to solve it, you to go ahead and do something that violates the condition. And then when you come back later, it's, you know, it's only a little thing and, you know, it's so unreasonable now to undo what's done and so forth. Eventually that's got to stop because otherwise there's no incentive, whatever, for people to, to go through the normal process that we expect them to do. And I think we need to think about how that's supposed to happen. I wouldn't want to just suddenly spring that in this particular case, that that would probably be unfair. But I do think that people who follow this ought to be on notice that they just can't expect us to forever allow that kind of situation to take place without consequences.
Thank you. Okay. So moving forward with a vote, Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
Mr. Revellak.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. There's a vote, affirmative vote. Thank you, Mr. Nesi.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being so fair and so helpful. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
So that brings us up to the next, um, item on our agenda. It's number 3605, 150 Summer Street.
Good evening, board. Um, Mr. Chairman and board members, can you hear me all right and see me all right?
We can, Mr. Wong.
Okay. Hi, my name is Alvin Wong and I own 150 Summer Street along with my father, my Chuma Wong. And with me here tonight is Doug Resnick, he's our land use consultant. And also Ed Nunes, he's our architect. He was just on the call, I'm not sure where, oh, there he is. All right. And we're here tonight for an appeal of the billing inspector's determination of our off-street parking being limited to width of a driveway, which we believe contradicts what we were granted in our original special permit. And our original special permit was to add a dormer and also to expand our, our rear deck. And when we finished our special permit hearing with the ZBA last September, Rick had, had asked us to reach out to him before we started paving our parking area. And during the beginning of the summer, we reached that stage in our project and asked him to come out to have a look. When, when he came out there, he explained to us that we could only pave a maximum width of 20 feet for our parking spaces. And we'd have to leave the rest of it as usable open space. And I followed up by asking if we could put pavers on the rest of the space in the back so people could park. Uh, he said no, because then they would use it, use it for parking. Uh, we tried to get an explanation and, and brought all the exhibits we have here tonight. Uh, but he refused and asked us to come back to you guys. And I know that Rick, as the clerk, he, he wrote in the agenda, uh, that we're appealing the condition. But that's, that's not the case, we're appealing the billing inspector's interpretation of the condition.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to start off by going through the exhibits because I, I believe that they tell the story of this problem in a more logical order.
Okay. Uh, do you need us to give you, um, the ability to put documents up on the screen?
That would be great, that'd be great if I could share the screen, please.
Rick, could you please go ahead and do that?
And we've also highlighted the pertinent parts, so you don't have to look at, at every single thing.
Okay, Alvin should be okay.
Thank you. And so we believe that first and foremost, that the special permit that was granted last year.
Yeah.
And all documents that were part of the application had already granted us four parking spaces. Uh, there are four existing and there are four proposed. And we'll walk you through the, through the exhibits and you'll see that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was, somebody is, is talking, I'm not quite sure who it is.
Can I, can I ask that if you are on this, on this meeting and you are not presenting, if you could please mute yourself? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, so I'll start over. So, uh, we believe first and foremost that the special permit that was granted last year and all the documents that were part of the application had already granted us the four parking spaces. Uh, there are four existing and there are four proposed. And we'll, we'll walk you through these exhibits and you'll, you'll see that. And this is exhibit one, um, the special permit ass, application asked about creating undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. And we plan on satisfying that criteria by providing the ample off-street parking in the back of the house. And then in exhibit one B, which is the dimensional and parking information chart, we described the building as having zero usable open space before and zero after. And for the parking spaces, we had zero before, uh, four before and four after. And exhibit one C is also part of the application, it's the open space gross floor area chart. And we showed that there was zero existing usable open space and zero proposed usable open space. There was also zero proposed usable open space as a percentage of the GFA as well. And we also included our plot plan in the application, which showed that the proposed site had a paved parking area in the back of the house that made a majority of that area. And that's, that's highlighted on the proposed site side. And on the legend, uh, the minimum usable open space was zero for existing and for proposed, ju- just like we showed in the application. And this is exhibit one E, this is the memo by Jennifer Rate, uh, showing that the home is already non-conforming with the zoning bylaws in terms of lot area, in terms of frontage, uh, front and right side yard setbacks and usable open space. She also found that there wouldn't be any increase in traffic congestion or impairment of safety. And this is the decision, exhibit one F, uh, decision shows that the board incorporated all these items that we just discussed into the decision as well as the memo by Jennifer Rate. Um, the board made the required finding related to this non-conforming two-family dwelling that it would not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And at the very end of the special permit, there was a, there was a special condition I included that say that driveway paving must comply with the rules and regulations of the zoning bylaw. And as such, we went back to the zoning bylaw to see if we'd meet that criteria. And first off, in 6.1.10A, it states that there should not be any off-street parking on anything other than a driveway not exceeding 20 feet in width, leading to the required parking spaces. And this is where I think us and Rick have been misunderstanding. We interpreted, interpreted this as differentiating the parking spaces from the driveway, that there were two different concepts. And since our driveway is only 13.4 feet wide, we would meet that condition of the special permit. And in 6.1.11A, it says that parking spaces shall have a minimum dimension of eight and a half feet by 18 feet. And we show that this is possible on the parking plan drawn by our architect in exhibit two. In 6.1.11B, the parking area shall be surfaced with a permanent or pervious or impervious material binder. And it's going to be paid, it would be paved with asphalt, so that'd help meet that criteria. And for 6.1.11C1, uh, we're working with a town-approved payment contractor who would work to meet the standards set by the town engineer regarding drainage. And that would be done on, onsite. Uh, and 6.1.11C2, uh, there would also be concrete tire stops in each designated parking spot. And so these are all the exhibits that we had in the application. As you can see, when, when we applied for the special permit, we applied with the goal of having four parking spaces. And when we went back to the zoning bylaws, we came across the grandfathering, the grandfathering provision, uh, namely 6.1.7, uh, which say that spaces cannot be reduced as long as the use is the same. And so when we brought, when we bought the property, it was used for four cars. And then during construction, we also used it for four cars. And when we received the special permit, went back to the zoning bylaw to make sure that we met the conditions of the special permit. And we interpreted the driveway paving was not the same as the parking spaces in the back. And we believe that nothing in zoning bylaw section 6.1 suggests that the parking area is limited to the maximum width of a driveway. And we meet the dimensional requirements described in 6.1.10 and 6.1.11. And I think that if the billing inspector's determiner, determination was allowed to stand, it would create, definitely create undue traffic congestion and pedestrian safety. It would also defeat the purposes described in the zoning bylaw for off-street parking. And we also have a neighbor, uh, Mary Dixon, uh, who is immediately a neighbor to the right of us. She owns both houses directly to the right of us. And she was available last week, but, but not available this week. Uh, she wanted us to relay her excitement regarding our renovations and her concerns regarding traffic congestion. And this is the email correspondence on my screen, um, between me and her. And this is the last week. And last, last summer before, we, while we were doing renovations, she had asked us that we keep one space in front, open in front of her house because she uses it regularly. And we were happy to agree with that. And so in this email, she says, we showed her the exhibit two. And she says, this new design with the four parking spaces looks perfectly acceptable to me. Um, fast forward to the end of that, when prospective tenants come to rent my units, whether it is at Maples or here at Latice, they usually have two vehicles. Sometimes they have three, but I turn them away. It is rare that a person or family has just one vehicle. At 150, with four and three bedrooms each, in a high-end house, you'll never find customers with just one car. Thus seriously limiting the return on investment. And in parentheses, does the 600,000 cost you cited include the original cost of the house or just the renovation? Just, just asking, either way, it's a lot of money. And it was, it was just for the renovation, not including the cost of the house either. So almost twice as, twice that amount. And so board members were, were asking to confirm to us that the original special permit allowed us to construct four parking spaces in the rear of the property. And those are all the exhibits I have and I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that the board may have.
Sorry about that. Um, so this is the, the plan that you had shown, you had highlighted the proposed parking area.
Yeah.
So, um, is the extent of the pavement that is indicated here as exist, as existing site, is this accurate as of the existing condition?
No.
So this, so at the time that this was filed, this was not the existing condition of the?
It, it was the existing condition. Those little triangles to the right of that existing pavement.
Yeah.
It's broken asphalt.
Okay.
But it, it, they wouldn't allow us to show the use of, of it being parking beforehand, cuz the surveyors can, it said they cannot, they can't show use on a plot plan.
Right. But it's, but this was, so was this, what was the, it says, just, it says disturbed. So what was the condition of this area?
It's mostly dirt, broken up asphalt.
And then, so you had shown us here, uh, under 6110A.
Yep.
That, um, off-street parking should not be, shall not be permitted in the area between the front lot line, blah, blah, blah. Off-street parking is permitted, but it does say off-street parking is permitted in one, the side yard. Off-street parking is permitted, but it does say off-street parking is permitted in one, the side yard and rear yard on a paved driveway. Or in the case of a corner lot, which does not apply. Two, in an attached or detached garage. Or three, within the foundation of a dwelling, provided the garaging is specifically designed for that purpose. So that in a residential district, parking can either be in the side or rear yard on a driveway, in an attached garage or within the foundation of a dwelling. And then going up to the definition of a driveway.
Leading to.
Driveway, it was open to the sky, which may be paved or not. It may be paved and not more than 20 feet wide, built for access to a garage or an off-street parking or loading space. So I think the, the question that I have is where parking in a residential lot can either be on a driveway or in a garage or within the confines of the house. In a case where there's no garage and there's no parking within the house. Where the driveway is not.
Leading to.
So the driveway is not. There is no provision for a parking lot in a residential district by the, by the zoning bylaws. Which I, I, I was not a part of the original discussion. And so at this point, I would ask you know, those members of the board who were a part of this original discussion, if they could shed some light on where the request to abide by the that, where that, where that original statement came from in the decision. I don't know if Mr. Dupont or Mr. Handland can recall.
But can we go back to section 6.1.10?
Yeah.
Where's?
616, 619, 6110.
And so it says, except on driveway not exceeding 20 feet in width.
Yep.
Leading to the required parking spaces.
So the definition of a driveway is you know, a way, either paved or not, that leads to so that's back up here, sorry, in the definition. Be paved or not, paved, maybe paved, not more than 20 feet wide and built for access to a garage or to an off-street parking or loading space. So.
So leading to.
So there's, the way this is all written is a little confusing. Because it sounds like in order for it to be a driveway, it has to lead to somewhere where you can park. And in a residential district, the only places you can park is on a driveway or in an attached garage within the foundation of the dwelling. I did notice that, I think that the properties to, you know, facing the front of your house, the properties to the right do have garages at the rear property line. And so their driveway sort of expands out to give access to the garage. So I'm not, so it's, it's a little chicken and egg question almost with the driveway. Is it a driveway if there's nothing to lead to it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
There, that section that we're just looking at, my name is Doug Resnick and I am a land use consultant for Alvin and his dad. And I have, I've worked with them on this project since the time the application for the original special permit was filed.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't understand why it, when it talks about a driveway leading to parking spaces. All the materials and exhibits which are incorporated in the board's decision show that we were trying to maintain the four spaces that originally existed. How we could then rely on the confusing language in where parking can be had versus the grandfathering provision, the clear separation of parking spaces and driveway in section 6.1.10. And, and the practicality of having had four. The most spaces we would be allowed to get on a driveway would probably be two, just as a practical matter. Whereas on exhibit two, we've shown that we can maintain our four spaces, all of the proper size, with tire stops, with appropriate drainage. And, and that means that there'll be two less cars, as Ms. Dixon points out, at least, not on the street. I, she also mentioned to Alvin at one point, one of her conversations, I think that there is snow plowing emergency time and street cleaning at times when the cars have to be off the street. Here we are with two units, four spaces, being able to completely park them all on our property, which is, I think, a, a, a key objective in granting any special permit. And we can do it with our four spaces as we designed. And whether, you know, obviously at the time, we were focused on the small dormer that was being added and the, and the minor porch extension. But we tried to take every measure possible to maintain the four spaces that were previously there. And the, and the grandfathering provision says they can't be reduced as long as the use is staying the same. So whether they were legitimate or not in the first place, or they complied with the definitions, and I say they did. You know, we'd be, we'd be causing just the opposite of what special permits are designed to do.
So so just for context, I believe this is 150 Summer Street.
Yes.
Here, okay. So this is the, the original paved area and these are, this is sort of the degraded area, I think, as it said on the plan.
Yes, which was previously used for parking. That's where the construction vehicles parked during construction and that's where the tenants previously parked.
Okay.
The, the house and the, and the yard were in deplorable shape, both. And that's why the renovations were so costly and, and so forth. And we can't, you know, just didn't even think it would be problematic to visualize four spaces in an area that's easily contains four cars.
So I believe, back. So for the original decision. I don't know if Mr. Dupont, Mr. Mills, or Mr. Handland, if any of you have any specific comments to what the discussion was at this hearing when it took place last summer.
So I don't have any specific recollection and I did not maintain or retain the file. But I, I have a question and then a comment. So my question is in the area that you just showed on the map with the, above, you know, picture of the house, there were four spaces at the time when that picture was taken, is that correct?
Yes.
And so as it's proposed now, would the, two of the parking spaces be offset from the driveway and then two cars being parked in the driveway? Is that what the configuration would be?
Yeah. Can you repeat that, please? Sorry.
So where are you going to park the four cars? Are two will be parked in the driveway itself and then two will be parked off to the side? Is that correct?
No, sir. There would be four parking consecutively next to each other. I can show you the plan in exhibit two.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have those in front of me.
See. And I, if you look at the screen, now you can see it. Yep. And right there, so you can see the tire stops. And then the four spots parking along the right side of the, the right side of the fence.
Okay, so the driveway comes in and then it's heading back and parking to four spaces. And then Christian, if I may, when I read the findings in this, in the decision in terms of the requirements, number one, where it says driveway paving must comply with the rules and regulations of, probably meant of the zoning bylaws it says on. I'm not convinced because I don't have a clear recollection. At the time, were, were the four parking spaces delineated as you're showing them now?
That's how we use them. We parked in that same, that same spot.
But I'm just saying, at the time that we approved this originally.
Through the chair, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Through the chair, please. No, they were not delineated. And if we look back at the site plan on the existing conditions plan, it's, it's a bunch of broken up pavement and disturbed area. Now, given the fact that the driveway comes in on the left-hand side of the house, the only place really to go is toward that right sideline. And that's what the tenants previously had done. That's what we did with our construction vehicles during construction and so forth. Because if you park in the driveway, the other cars can't get in and out. So they all have to be arrayed and they were arrayed all along that right-hand sideline.
Which, which I understand, and I guess what I'm trying to do is think back to what it was that we intended when we imposed this first condition. And, you know, it says the driveway paving, and it's specific to the paving and it doesn't actually specify anything with regard to the spaces, the number of spaces, the location of the spaces.
That's exactly correct. Now, what, what was, what we were really trying to do that, at the hearing, which I was present for, Mr. Nunes was present for, and Alvin was, Alvin gave the presentation. We didn't discuss parking. There was no mention of it, except in all the materials that we had filled out as part of the application, which were incorporated by the board and in several places said, we're looking to maintain the four spaces that had previously existed. The, as I, as Alvin indicated before, and I had this discussion with the surveyors on the existing conditions plan, they refused, I asked them to show parking over in that neck of the woods. And they refused and they wouldn't do it because the standards for survey are that you can just show existing conditions. So they have some pieces of broken up pavement that they show and they have disturbed area that they show. But they could not designate as parking, just like they could not designate the house as anything but a two-story wood frame house. They couldn't call it a two-family because that related to the use. But that's where the spaces have always been.
Mr. Chairman, I might be able to help the board out, if I'm allowed to. It's Rick Valerelli here.
Yes, Mr. Valerelli.
So back when the decision was rendered in September 24th, 2019, it was approved with a condition. And that condition said that the driveway paving must comply with the rules and regulations of the zoning bylaw. Excuse me. So Inspection Services noted that the driveway was being prepped much greater than 20 feet in width. The driveway can only be always 20 feet wide, leading to the required parking. The intent of that bylaw is to, going forward, new construction, new houses, the driveway in the front of the houses can only be 20 feet wide. People that own two-family houses that rent them cannot pave the entire backyard because the driveway could only be 20 feet wide. So the board rendered the, the decision a favorable one with the condition, as they did to 7274 Grafton Street, that fine, you can have your special permit, lack of open space, but you must make the driveway comply to the rules and regulations of zoning bylaw. And I think that what the board intended that night, seeing how I was there taking notes, was the proposal is to pave the entire backyard. If they keep the driveway at 20 feet wide, at least they have a little bit of open space. Not saying it's going to meet, and they still needed the special permit for 902D at the time. But at least there's a little bit. The proposed parking scenario is an entire paved backyard. And I think, in fact, I know, because I was present, that the intent was to at least gain a little bit of open space on the right-hand side of that lot.
Mr. Chairman? I was at the hearing, parking was never discussed. And I don't recall, I don't think the board made their decision that evening. So it's perhaps they made it at the, you made it at the next meeting. At which time, we didn't have any idea about this condition until we saw the special permit decision, which we immediately reviewed and made sure that, yes, we had requested four parking spaces. Yes, we had shown it on the application. Yes, we had shown the entire paving of the backyard. What else are we supposed to do with that area that does not qualify as usable open space than to park cars? It doesn't comply with the dimensional requirements for usable open space.
Hear me?
Yeah, we're good.
This is Ed Nunes. I'm the architect. Doug, I just want to say a couple of words. And one, by definition, the definition actually describes an access drive that leads to parking, which is exactly what the proposed plan does. It's an access drive that does not exceed 20 feet. It leads to four parking spaces. That's exactly what the definition says. Also, if we could go back to the Google Earth and take a look at all of the budding properties beside this, you'll notice that those entire backyards are paved and they're leading to a garage, in some cases. I, I, I have, I have a problem with the interpretation of the definition because the definition clearly states it's an access drive that leads to parking, which is exactly what the proposed plan did. And the night of the hearing, there was no discussion about parking. The proposed plan that was with the application shows the outline of the paving, which is exactly the outline of the paving that we submitted pointedly indicated where the parking was. If you look at these, these photographs, the house on, on the bottom of the photograph has all pavement that leads to a garage. I thought there was another, another one as well. I mean, it almost, it looks to me like a majority of the houses back there have all paving leading to either a garage. In some, I'm not sure if they all have garages, but certainly it's all paved.
All the three houses to the left of us have, have garages and they're all paved.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Handland.
I think that there are two, there are two separate issues here and we need to sort of keep them separate. One is what the zoning ordinance means. If the zoning warden, if the definition of a driveway is interpreted in the way that the chairman laid out to suggest that basically you can't have a parking lot in your backyard, then the condition, if that's what the condition was intending to say you have to continue doing, doesn't make any difference. We, we don't have the power to issue a special permit, I don't believe, to relax that requirement. It would require a variance to do that. So the first question is, what interpretation of the language of the zoning bylaw is right? And that relates not just to this property, but to any property that is like that. And we need to pay attention to consistency and we need to pay attention to the normal rules of statutory construction.
And we need to pay attention to the normal rules of statutory construction. If it turns out. That this doesn't violate the zoning ordinance, then the question is, as a matter of policy. It, does it make sense or not? I noticed that the, I was, this was one of my first hearings on this board. But I noticed that the condition does not report to go beyond the zoning ordinance. So if it's allowed by the zoning ordinance, it's allowed by the condition. And then the question is, well, what is the right thing to do? And. Obviously, I think there, there's a good case to be made, in my opinion. I've gone there and looked at it. That in some ways. This is backed up right against the Minute Man Trail. There's green space immediately behind that. It does seem sensible. They have a suitable, they have four parking spaces. It isn't so out of, out of, it doesn't look out of, out of. Compliance, out of context with the, with the others. And I noticed that I don't have a very big car, so I could do it all right. But it's not that easy to park on Summer Street in that little sort of bicycle path area behind that. And I think Mr. Wong is exactly right, that if, in fact, a decision that we made as a matter of policy. Were to push the parking out into the street. That would be the very problem of interfering with access and interfering with traffic that we'd like to avoid. But we don't get to the policy issues until we resolve the zoning interpretation issues, and that's what I'm sort of. Like focus on, because I don't really know the difference, and I. I'm sure that we have already had. In this hearing. Multiple times, two or three orders of magnitude, more discussion about this issue than actually occurred at the hearing. It just was not a major issue. It was not mentioned or noticed in the planning department memorandum. I don't remember it being noticed by anyone else. I would very much like to listen to, to the tape if there were time to do that, to see what discussion there was. But I don't remember that there was a discussion, and I certainly don't remember. Any discussion to the effect that we were trying to. Get as much not quite usable open space in that broken up area as we could. That, that is not a policy that I recall, but. It wasn't a major issue, and it was not the focus of the hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Revellak.
Yes, I'm thinking, you know, listening to this and thinking about. You know, going back to the zoning bylaw, section 6110, location of parking spaces. And particularly 6110A, parking in residential districts. I. I mean, it's, it seems awfully hard to interpret that literally. You know, meaning that the parking. That parking, you know. Cannot go to an off-street parking, or a driveway cannot go to an off-street parking space, but must go to a garage. And I'm just, you know, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, like slightly larger multifamily. Multifamily buildings, like a triple-decker, for example, which has more than three parking spaces. It, you know, or a small apartment with a parking lot. So I mean. In a way, the literal interpretation, the literal reading, as, 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 as you said earlier, Mr. Chairman. Basically, it doesn't provide for a, a parking lot in a residential. You know, in a residential use, but. Given the number of them that we have. You know, and I, and I, and I realize that, you know, there's, these probably predate the zoning laws. The, this revision of the zoning bylaw. There. It seems absurd to disallow that. You know, or. Yeah, I'm, you know, one of the things I found myself thinking is, if the applicant, you know, would the applicant. Would this be a non-issue if the applicant constructed a four-car garage in the rear of the property? And it's. You know, and so having like a, having a. You know, if, looking at it like that, the question becomes, is one, is, is a garage a requirement? When there are more than two cars to be parked? I, I agree, it's, it's not terribly clear.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman. Folks, that was my dogs. Check or stop it.
Comments in relation to the original hearing?
I'm sorry?
I was asking Mr. Mills if he had any comments related to the original hearing. Shake his head, no. So we're a little bit of a conundrum here. So another question that had occurred to me, so the. The section of the bylaw on existing spaces, 617. Which says that the number of parking spaces shall not be. Decreased, or in any way removed from service to the use originally intended to be served, so long as the use remains. The following sentence says, however, this regulation shall not require the maintenance of more parking or loading spaces than is required. According to the tables in this section one. And by that. Table for residential, single, two, and three-family dwellings, it's one space per dwelling unit. So. The bylaw does not require the maintenance of more than two parking spaces. In that area. I know that the. That the, the applicant is looking to maintain the four spaces, but. That, that section of code does not require that there be four spaces there. It only requires that there be two.
Mr. Chairman, the two sentences are really separated. I think what they're saying in the second one that you just mentioned. Is that if you don't, if you don't have room. For more than the required spaces, you shouldn't be required to have them. The first sentence or two, which is the grandfathering provision, says that they shall not be reduced. Decreased in any way, removed from service to use originally intended to be served, so long as the use remains. So to me, that's a clear grandfathering provision that said if you had four, as we pointed out in the application. And you want to keep four, you can, even though only one is required per unit.
And if I can, Kristin, I also think in terms of the application. Which I think Mr. Wong had put up a little bit earlier, and it said four existing and four proposed, did it not?
It did.
In terms of spaces. And so I'm thinking that at the time that we acted on this, we would have. Viewed that, and when we approved the. Application or the petition, we would have, I think, have been incorporating into the decision the fact. That there would have been four spaces, even though if it was pass it. As everybody's pointed out, there's really no reference to the number of spaces. But I do wonder how we would have maintained four spaces without going into the backyard. Was it envisioned? That they would all be in the driveway itself, from the street all the way to the back? You know?
I don't, I don't know if it's anticipating that there'd be two sets of two tandem spaces. Within the 20-foot width, heading to the, you know, in the distance between the, the rear face of the house and the fence at the back. I don't know if that was the intention. I know there's a, it appears that there's a tree well on the left-hand property line. That the pavement steps around, so, you know, that's. That area is obviously complicated by the, by the appearance of the tree.
So can I ask another question? Is it the case that previously in the existing. Conditions that parking was done behind the house and not on the driveway?
Yes, yes. In, in the same manner that we. That we showed in, in Exhibit 2.
Again, you can't really park anywhere else and still be able to get, to have any cars go in or out if the driveway is consumed by parking. So as always, enter on the left, swing to the right.
I mean, if all four spaces are tandemed. That a straight driveway back, you know, just taking the worst-case scenario, you could put four cars in a row, starting at the. Side of the house and have four cars bumper-to-bumper all the way back. With provided with four spaces, it would be a terrible situation.
Yes.
It would be the Arlington situation, because that's about 95% of the houses in Arlington or that way. Okay, at this point. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for, oh, Mr. Revellak, yep, one more.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, I just want to be clear on one thing. With, for a question to Mr. Wong, but I'll direct it through you, Mr. Chair. Is the proposed layout of four parking spaces the way that the rear of the lot is currently utilized? In other words, will, in other words, for effect, you do not plan to change how vehicles are parked, you are simply putting down new pavement and curb stops?
Yes, yes, exactly.
But you are, to further that, though, you are paving, you are now paving an area of land. That is listed as disturbed area, not as existing pavement.
That is right.
Okay, thanks. So I would like to open this to public comment. If you would like to comment, raise your hand. I see Mr. Seltzer has raised his hand. I will go ahead and. Call on Mr. Seltzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's on Seltzer Irving Street. I agree with Mr. Revellak that the wording of 6.1.10A is kind of ambiguous. I once had occasion to ask Inspeccional Services about a very similar situation in my neighborhood. Where some construction was going on, and the owner was building essentially a parking lot in the side and rear yards. And I was directed to this portion of the bylaws, in particular, to the. In A, where it refers to a parking area 24 feet in width. And. The interpretation I got at the time from Inspeccional Services that it's. Perfectly okay to have a 20-foot-wide driveway. Leading to the side or backyard to a parking area that's 24 feet in width. That's would partially solve. Mr. Wong's problem in that he could certainly get a parking area. Three cars wide back there. Perhaps what he wants to do is make one of them tandem spaces, and that would allow him to legally get four spaces into his backyard.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to you, Mr. Seltzer. Did you say that? Was there a designation as to where the? Oh, so the 20, I see where the 24-foot width is, never mind. All right, thank you.
I'm guessing that right now the area he wants to pave is somewhere in the. Around 30, 32 feet wide.
Okay.
Certainly, if you, if he made it 24 feet wide enough for three cars side by side. That would seem to be within what the somewhat ambiguous bylaw says right now.
Yeah, that would make it difficult, if I may, that would make it difficult for the cars to, to turn around and back onto, on a summer street.
Yeah.
I, I would like to avoid having any, any tenants backing, reversing back on a summer street. I would rather them. Driving the car forward on Summer Street.
Are there other questions from the public? None? I'll go ahead and close public comment. Okay, so returning to the board. Because what people. Think would be an equitable resolution to this issue. The, the bylaw is a little ambiguous on this, on this point. I am a little concerned about the. The precedent that would be set by. Allowing a, the entire backyard to be paved. But at the same time, I, I have no objection to repaving the area that was initially paved. Or in setting, it would appear that increasing that to 24 feet would be a wider area than it is. A larger area than is shown paved on the existing site plan. And I, I agree that, you know, it is desirable to have turnaround space. For. For vehicles. You know, if you're parking at 90 degrees, the idea is that you have a 24, you have an 18-foot parking space, and you have a 24 feet clear behind the parking space. To allow the three-point turn.
Which is.
This law is not that wide. And so. I'm not certain that a car would be, that, you know, that there's proper space to turn her cars around anyways, especially in that fourth position where there's no. There's. You would either have to back up the entire driveway to back into the space, or you would have to back down. So I, my, my, my sense from reading it is that we, you know. A space up to 24 feet wide, there's no question in anyone's mind as to whether that's allowed. The question is whether. That can be increased. Further in width. And Mr. Revellak, I believe, that question.
Well, earlier you mentioned, you know, the, the, you know, the real change would be. I believe, Mr. Chair, you, you mentioned that, you know, really the difference is we have an area that's currently marked as undisturbed area, and the proposal is to pave it. And creating an impervious surface. What, what about the possibility of? For exam, well. Just toss, tossing it out. A pervious. Covering the, covering the, what's currently called an undisturbed area or a disturbed area, covering it with a pervious surface. You know, it, this, I mean, I'm thinking it could be concrete block filled with gravel. It could be one of a variety of paving systems. That are designed to, that are designed to be pervious and. You know, let water drain through.
Sort of like a grass pave type?
Yeah, that, that would, that would be fine as well. Yeah, they, basically something other than, other than asphalt.
Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Well, I think. Then I think that we should go as far as the law allows us to do to enable Mr. Wong to do what he needs to do, and I think to some extent, that's what we're working on right now, is what is an acceptable thing. Measure that is at least arguably consistent with the bylaw. But that doesn't lead to undesirable consequences. And, you know, sometimes the right answer is when you're not sure what the law requires, you do what makes the most sense, and. I, for me, the most sense is to, is to not may have any pretense that what you're trying to do is get a little bit of extra open space out of here. The, the plan for parking that Mr. Wong has seems to me to be in some ways the ideal plan for the site, but if that. If we have the conclusion that that can't be reconciled with the law, I think that we ought to do what we can. To lay the groundwork for him to do what's necessary. Certainly, parking on the street is not a good idea. Backing out onto the street is an even worse idea. And you, you need to do something in order to make this parking situation, parking situation work. So I'd be willing to go along with anything that. And it's too complicated for me to figure out on the fly. But I'd like to do whatever we can to make this work as best, as best we can.
There are no standards in the bylaw for a parking lot in a residential district, because there's not supposed to be a parking lot in a residential district. But. It does say side yard is used for parking, shall have a vegetated buffer when abutting a lot used for residential purposes. And it does appear on the plan that there is. A very small distance, possibly two feet, between the edge of the. a very small distance, possibly two feet, between the edge of the, what's proposed as parking and the side fence. Was there, what was the intent for that area? If I can ask the applicant, yes, Mr. Wong?
There would be, it would, that would be grass, grass area. That would be landscaped area right there.
Is there a fence currently in that position?
There is a fence on both sides.
Okay. Is it a chain link fence, or is it like a more of a?
It's.
Fence that blocks, it's a stockade fence, thank you.
How wide is the cousin, current driveway along the side of the house?
13.4 feet.
But then, once it gets to the backyard, it looks like it opens up to maybe 20, 21 feet at the back? It's a little bit more, just a little more than 24, 42, than half of 42 feet.
I know this is not optimal for their situation. But I'm a little afraid of setting precedent here.
Yeah.
And if he does have a 20-foot-plus driveway in back, that's plenty wide to stack cars two by two tandem, which is the situation for most of us in Arlington.
Right.
And if we set precedent here, allowing the complete paving of a driveway, that could be something we're gonna have to live with going forward in the future.
Now, that's 11.6, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, some of those lines on the existing site plan have nothing to do with current pavement. There's some dash lines that aren't relevant. The, at the point the driveway reaches the rear of the house, it goes down to 11.
11.6, yeah.
11.6 feet. So again, I mean, we would be, we could work something out with pervious material for the other part, even though the bylaw says pervious or impervious. The other bylaw, right under the section where, which you believe, Mr. Chairman, restricts the parking to a driveway, it says leading to the spaces. It doesn't say leading to the garage, leading to anything else. And as Ed pointed out a few, a few minutes ago, if you go to the aerial, you can see that the backyards of most of the houses that are adjacent are paved in full. So I'm not sure what kind of precedent would be, a concerning precedent would be set here. I guess it's unfortunate that, and, you know, we've all been reading zoning bylaws for a long time, and they're not, you know, we wish they were written perfectly and unanimously. Where the next line after you're looking at says the driveway leading to the spaces.
Right.
How is the driveway the same as the spaces?
Right. No, exactly. I mean, that, that is a confusion that it, basically, if there's no spaces, then there can't be a driveway. But there can't be spaces unless there's a garage or similar. So it's, it's a little confusing as to how one does that. Obviously, the houses on the adjacent properties do have garages. And this property, because it's, you know, the, the, between the bike way and the street, it's wedging down. This lot is not, not as deep as the adjacent houses to the right. And so obviously, there's not room for a garage.
The way this case could be determined from, from future cases, or distinguished from future cases, has to do with the fact that we already have four spaces. So if we rely on the grandfathering provision to prevent a reduction in those spaces, we would not be required in the future to say, okay, pave the whole backyard. We have a pre-existing condition. It was pre-existing in many ways, pre-existing non-conforming in many ways. And I guess all we're really trying to do is maintain what we had before, and that seems to be clearly part of the purpose of the off-street parking bylaw.
And so, and so your, your contention is that the, the four spaces that are listed on the application are effectively in the same position as the four shown on the paving plan that you displayed during the hearing?
Absolutely. Not just a contention, that's the way they've been used. That's the way they've been used in the past.
Okay.
It gives the most flexibility in turning and storage and all that kind of stuff. We have to plow this lot, too.
Right. Do you have room to store the snow?
Yes, the rear lot line, where it shows a fence, there's several feet beyond that fence, which is now down.
Okay.
Ordering the greenway.
Is there still a fence between your property and the greenway?
There's still a fence.
There is still a fence, okay.
There's a, there's a new fence on each, each side.
Oh, okay. But the position that is shown here, where it's a couple, couple feet back, is not the proper position anymore?
The fence is in the same, the same position.
Oh, it is in the same position, okay.
Same position that it was in the past.
Okay. Mr. Revellak?
One last question. Um, Mr. Valor, to Mr. Valorelli and through you, Mr. Chair. If the proposed, if the proposed driveway, if the driveway were construct, or parking area, sorry, parking area, were constructed as proposed, would it trigger the stormwater management bylaw of the town of Arlington?
Yes.
With, meaning that the, the applicant would have to work with a town engineer to develop a plan to, to basically retain water on site so that the, you know, the pre-construction, the, the post-construction off-flow was no greater than the pre-construction off?
Yes.
Let me, let me think about that. So we'll go back to existing condition, because the zoning bylaw with respect to the stormwater management plan states that if there is an increase from the existing condition to the proposed condition. So I'm not sure what was there for impervious area on the proposed condition. It may or may not exceed 350 square feet additional. I would have to look, probably using Google Earth. It's a consideration. It should be looked at.
And if I may, through the chair, we're working with an approved Arlington, town of Arlington pavement contractor, Lazaro Paving, and they would take care of all the drainage on-site for the stormwater. So we don't believe that would be, be a problem.
Mr. Adams, if you could mute yourself, please. Thank you.
Okay, so the findings that the board would need to reach in order to, so I guess that's part of the question now, too. Are we amending the special permit? Or are we?
Mr. Chairman?
Removing?
Our appeal is, we are not doing anything with the special permit itself. This is unlike the first case you listened to tonight.
Okay.
We are, we are appealing a determination of the building official. And you do not, you don't have to make the same findings as you do if we were getting or amending a special permit.
Okay. And which, what is the specific determination that you are asking to be overturned?
Our parking area is limited to a driveway 20 feet wide.
Based on what I've, to the discussion, what I've heard from the board, that sort of make the the following, propose the following vote, that the board finds that the exist, that the original use of the lot, of the rear yard of the lot what has been historically used for parking up to four vehicles. Then we say 617. The applicant, the property may maintain existing spaces. As such, board finds that the appellant is allowed to have four parking spaces in the area originally used for parking. This area is not to exceed the minimum area cloud for such purpose. Ie, four, eight and a half by 18-foot spaces with a 20-foot driveway. The appellant is to provide a vegetative buffer with closed fence long side yard per section, and I believe that is, where did I see the word vegetative? Now I can look up the specific citation. I believe it's 6110. Side yards use, have a vegetated buffer when abutting, okay. Okay. So I propose that board finds that the original use of the rear yard of the lot has historically been for parking. Up to, parking up to four vehicles. Per 617, the property, the, the owner may maintain the existing spaces. As such, the board finds that the appulant is allowed to have four parking spaces in the area originally used for parking. This area is not to exceed the minimum area allowed for such purpose, ie, four, eight and a half, eight foot, six inch by 18-foot spaces with a 20-foot driveway. The appulant is to provide a vegetative buffer with closed fence alongside yard per section 6110. And further applicant, that the appulant is to work with the town engineer on a, on a site drainage plan. How does that sound to the board?
I'm ready to move it.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Mills.
Clear, is that the exhibit that the applicant proposed?
The, the plan the appulant provided does not have any dimensions on it, which is why I wanted to attach some dimensions through the, through the finding.
Okay. Mr. Chair, is there any reference to the material for the, the parking?
There is not at this point.
And that's the stormwater issue will take that into account, do you think?
I believe it will, because that will, if there's enough perv, if there's enough pervious area, then it's not an issue. If there's too much impervious area, then they would need to provide onsite, onsite stormwater storage.
Okay.
Mr. Valorelli, do you agree with that, that last?
I do. So the condition of the special permit will be amended, is that?
Yeah, so if we were to, if we were to say that they need to work with the town engineer on a site drainage plan.
Yes.
The engineer would work with them if, if they have enough impervious, if they have enough pervious area, then they would be okay if they have too much impervious area, they would be required to do stormwater management.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other feedback from the board on that finding? Done? Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Mills? Do we have a second?
Second, I'm sorry, I said second?
Okay. Mr. Dupont?
That's very fast.
Okay. So votes from the board. Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Mr. Revellak?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Nay.
Nay. And the board votes aye. And that is a four to one vote, and that is sufficient to pass. Okay.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Which brings us up to Which brings us up to 21 Oakledge Street. I greatly appreciate your patience, Mr. Byers, and sticking with us.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. So if you could, please tell us a little bit about what you would like to do.
Oh, sure. Okay. We are hoping to add a very small bathroom addition to the side of our home. We're applying for a variance to do that because our lot is rather small, strangely situated, and rather close to the neighbors. I don't know how much more. You've done this before, so I don't know what kind of detail you want. We don't have a lot of.
Hey. I will, let's see here, go ahead and put, bring this up on the screen. I'll endeavor to rotate it. Right? So that's the propose. All sideways. Oops, that was the wrong way. Okay. Um.
Yes.
So this is the
The current, yeah, the current plot line with a very small side entrance.
Yep.
Which we're hoping to remove and replace with a slightly larger bathroom. And, and entrance to the rear of the house.
Okay, so currently it's 11 and a half feet off the line.
Yes.
To put the addition on, it would be, is that 8.6? Is that what that says there, I believe?
I think so. Yes.
Would intrude into the, and that's a side yard, right? Because the parking's on the opposite side and underneath.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And so I don't think we have an existing plan. But essentially existing it's just, it's essentially just a little, just a mudroom to go into the kitchen. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's like a very, very small landing outside the mudroom and then the bathroom on the other side.
Okay.
Yep.
And did, did you do any investigation in trying to locate the, the bathroom off the rear of the house?
Yes. I mean, I mean, not, it's not formally documented, but that would essentially be the bathroom, that would put the bathroom off our dining room, which I don't think is a very.
It would also put the bathroom like at the eye level of our backyard neighbor's house.
Be rather, be rather intrusive from the inside and the outside, I would think.
And I think if you were to add it to the rear of the house, it would most likely exceed the rear yard setback.
Certainly.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And so you are aware that is, that a variance is a different set of criteria, obviously than the
Yep, we are.
Yeah.
It's a criteria set by the state for which we have no, no leeway over how, how it goes forward. Stop sharing this and open up to questions from the board. Mr. Mills says no questions. Mr. Hanlon, he's shaking his head, Revolak shaking his head. Mr. Dupont? No, no questions. Are there quest, are there comments from the general public? Questions from the general public going once, going twice? No comment from the public. Okay, so I will close public comment period. All right, so to the board. So the four, I will go back to sharing. Okay, so there are four variance criteria that we have to meet and we have to agree upon. So the first is circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, topography, which especially affects the land or structure in question, but does not affect generally the zoning district in which the land or structures located that would substantiate the granting of a variance. And so they have proposed that the structure is non-conforming on a small lot hemmed in by structures on three sides. Given the unusual lot, there's only one feasible location for a small addition on the left side of the house replacing the existing side entrance.
If I, I may, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Um, I just want to note, or one of the things I noticed when reading through the application materials is this is a 2,816 square foot lot, making it tiny even by Arlington standards.
Yeah.
We are aware.
Yep.
And so this is the document that was prepared by Jennifer Rate of the Department of Planning and Community Development. To 2016 square feet, the applicant's property is significantly smaller than the 6,000 square foot minimum required for a structure. Further, the existing structure is sighted at an angle to the street frontage, limiting the applicant's ability to complete an addition without encroaching into and into the existing setbacks. Additionally, the topography of the land is sloped such that the side yard is level with the first floor on the northwest, but slopes downward. So the southeast side yard is level with the basement, limiting the applicant's ability to construct a first floor addition on any other side of the structure. Due to the topography, lot conditions and orientation, there are limited areas where a 50 foot, 50 square foot addition on the first floor could be constructed without increasing or creating a non-conformity with the bylaw. So I think that, that finding is stated by the by the planning department would satisfy criteria one. Criteria two, a literal enforcement of the provisions, the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, the petition or applicant. In order to add a bathroom to the first floor within the minimum setbacks required by the zoning bylaw would require the applicant to substantially modify the structure's floor plan. Adding considerably best the addition. The only question I have in regards to this on the plan is, so it appears it's a three quarter bath.
Yep.
Is that correct? Did you consider doing just a half bath on the first floor? Does that, or does it not actually gain you any space?
Well, I mean, we, I mean, we're trying to plan ahead. We have, we have two kids and I feel like showering, showering is going to be at a premium at some point. Well, now, but I think, I think that was really our priority was to have, you know, our family be able to grow into the house.
On the, how many bedrooms are on the second floor?
Three-ish.
Three-ish.
What, what is, you know, what is a large hallway to the attic? But yeah, that child sleeps there.
And then how many bathrooms are on the second floor?
One.
Just the one?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess my question to the board is does a literal, it's a literal enforcement of this, so they're asking for 1.4 feet into the, to go 1.4 feet into the setback. So would a literal enforcement involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise? So I guess that's
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr.
I have two thoughts on that. One is that after sitting here for almost three hours at an advanced age, I can easily see how not having sufficient bathrooms would be secondly is there is a case in the record that a variance that was given under similar situations. It did appear to me that I wasn't completely sure that the actual topography and the first criteria was necessarily comparable, but if you got by that,
Yeah.
what was, what was asked for there is the same sort of thing that was asked for here, a small bathroom addition. And it seems to me that we're not in a position anymore to say that tiny bathrooms put on here to, for the comfort of the family is, is not a, is not a substantial hardship. Obviously, there's some, there's, there's some level of judgment that has to go into this. It, you know, the amount of intrusion is exceedingly small as well. But I would certainly think that under these circumstances, it would be a substantial hardship not to be able to build this, this bathroom on this property.
Thank you. So criteria three, whether relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I think there's little question that that is true. That an extension on a side of a property that already has an existing addition that only encroaches 1.6 feet, or excuse me, 1.4 feet into the setback would be substantially detrimental. And then criteria number four, have desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. And again, were the property to be normally sized, this would not even be in front of us. And it allows them to maintain the properties as a fully functional, single family home, preserve the appearance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd also like just to point out that in the record is a letter that, from the McKennys who lived just to the, it gets to northwest, it's, it's up. And as nearest where this is, who expressed their support for all of this and made it very clear that they did not regard the infringement into the side yard here as being anything that would derogate from their privacy or any other interest that their property would have.
Also, good reason not to put a skylight in the bathroom, but yeah, they have no problem with it.
Okay. So are there any further questions or comments from the board?
None.
Seeing none. So I will propose a motion. So move that the board find the four criteria met for granting a variance. Per the call those for the comments provided by the department, the Department of Planning and Community Development. So the, that the board finds of the four criteria for granting a variance are met per the comments provided by the applicant and the Department of Planning and Community Development. So that would be our proposed vote. If there's a motion, so move by Mr. Dupont. Have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, do we have the conditions that will be attached to this? Presumably there's the usual.
Oh, bless you, Mr. Mills. Yeah, so I think we would have the, the standard ones. Which sit where? So we would require that the zoning board of appeals shall continue to maintain jurisdiction with respect to the granting of a special permit and that there should be no deviation during construction from the approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals.
And substitute the word variance for a special permit.
Can I?
Thank you.
Do that include things like, you know, a window moving slightly to the side or something like that? Or are we just talking about like the structural?
Um. So my sense is that if if the windows, if like, if a window changed size, that would be acceptable. If a window moved, that would be acceptable. If a window moved and changed sizes, then it's sort of starting to get on the edge of that.
Okay, understood. I don't see that happen.
So the original motion with these, with the two conditions, so that would be the, the vote, Mr. Dupont. How do you vote?
Oh, aye, thank you.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Hanlon votes aye. Mr. Revolak?
Aye.
Both aye. Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Both aye. Chair votes aye. That is unanimous decision. The variance is granted. Congratulations.
Very much.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate your, your patience with the long evening and the, the unfortunate postponement from last week.
No, thank you.
We understand. Does this, are we allowed to sort of move ahead now? Or is there another step?
So should touch base with, with the building department. So we will, we will issue a decision, a formal written decision. And once that goes to the town clerk's office, there's a 20 day appeal period. And then once that has cleared, then you are free to go. But I would touch base with the building department in the morning and they can sort of fill you in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. All right. So there's a couple of things left on our agenda here. I'll go ahead and just bring up on the screen. So the items that are, there's a couple of people sticking around. So I had, we had noticed on one or two of the cases that the forms that we are using are actually outdated with regards to the, the zoning bylaw. So they still have the old numbers. So I had gone through and Mr. Hanlon had been good enough to sort of help read through revisions to the special permit application, the variance application and the form that require, that requests information. So this is the revised variance application. So it has the updated numbers. We've added a little more sort of text to try to make it a little more understanding. We've tried to sort of highlight the portions of the state code that are required. As our drive that home a little bit more. So that is the, that's our proposed revised application for variance. Similarly, for special permit, updating it to the right section of the new zoning bylaw. This is very similar to the start. And then just some clarification of the language here to make sure that the, the text in the questions corresponds tightly with what is in the, what are the questions that they're required to ask? So that's that one. And then we went through the forms. To up again, update the numbers. We also added. Specifically, there's a space for the square footage for landscape open space and the percentage and also for usable open space. For the square footage and the percentage of separate lines. Because sometimes we get one, sometimes we get the other, we really want to see both. So this will hopefully drive that home. And we added a slope of proposed roof, the proposed roofs. So we now have that on the application as well. And then on the gross floor calculation sheet, again, updating the references. And then, for the most part, this is. Essentially what it was originally. Again, breaking out under the minimum open space, breaking out into both square footage and percentage of GFA. And then it used to say reviewed by building inspector. But we've changed that to reviewed with the building inspector because that's really, I think, more the way that this happens. That the appulant sits down with a member of the building department to go through the sheet. So. We just we changed that wording as well. So those are the forms that we are proposing that this board uses. Are there any questions or comments in regards to those forms? Mr. Revolak.
I appreciate the in the dimensional worksheet, calling out the or having references to definitions for usable open space, gross floor area. I hope that little. Hint. Some of the confusion in the future.
Hopefully. Thank you for that. So seeing no other questions, I. Take a move to approve these forms.
Moved.
The move by Mr. Hanlon. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dupont. All those in favor say aye.
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 And the opposed. Those are approved. And somewhere I actually had an agenda. Back to novice. So I believe that was the last of the items on our agenda for tonight.
Yeah. Speak.
But I do note that the Adams families are with us this evening. Is there? Something you would like to address with the board?
There was one thing, the the last time you approved our driveway.
Yeah.
But there was a twenty day waiting period. We were concerned because we'd like to get that done with the contractor would like before. Towards the end of November, at least because of the weather.
Yeah.
If there's any way we can shorten that twenty day waiting period.
Okay, so um, so we did approve the the written decision this evening. So that decision should be going will that'll be going out for signature. And then going to the town. Town clerk, Mr. Valorelli, do you have any? Advice in this regard?
So what I'll do is I'll send that out, docu sign this week. And if you guys can get it back to me as soon as possible, run it up to the clerk, get it stamped, and the clock starts to tick. Should be okay. I mean, we're still first week of October.
So by we should be. The twenty day appeal period should be over. By the beginning of November.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, under the circumstances, though, we all sort of, I think, need to know that we need to sign this and get it back. So Mr. Valerie, we can get it in without unnecessary delay.
Please. Thanks, Pat.
Okay, and Mr. Valorelli, you have the the text of all I said you should have the full text of all of the decisions.
I do. So I would assume that the board made the corrections. And I'm going to get the text that we are going to send out for DocuSign. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think I think the decisions are fine. The minutes, we have a couple of edits that need to be made.
Yes, yes, no problem there.
Okay.
Right.
Perfect. All right, so we will we will move forward as quickly as we can in getting the. The very the, excuse me, the decision certified by the clerk, and that will hopefully expedite things as best as we can.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. May I have a? Thank you all for participating in tonight's. Online version of the zoning board of appeals. Any questions or comments? Please email them to our to the board at zba@town. arlington. ma.us. With that, a call for do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Don't move by Mr. Hanlon. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We stand adjourned. You all very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Night.
Good night.